Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the February 7th, 2023 Springdale Planning Commission Meeting. Before we get started, I'd like to ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in physical liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're just thankful for all the blessings you've given us as a city. We just ask you for those continued blessings. We're thankful for the city and the staff that runs this town. We ask you to please be with them and thank you for the safety they had during the ice storm or the snow storms. We just pray that you be with this commission to guide us, to make the best decisions possible for this city, in Christ's name, amen. Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Before we get the roll call, I'd like to welcome our two new members, Mr. Chris Hussein and Mr. Brent Couch.
Eat you to the table.
Eat you, yeah, eat you to the table, in case we can't see the names, but everybody else can. We'll do roll call.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Ray Cardell.
Here.
Mark Cloud.
Here.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Brent Couch.
Here.
Chris Hussein.
Here.
Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Dale Tyler. Here. Move on to the approval of the minutes for our January 3rd meeting. Any additions, corrections? If not, all in favor of...
You have a motion.
Oh, yeah, I need a motion to approve those minutes.
Dale, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Motion of Dr. Compton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. Now, we've got election of our new officers, since it's been a year since I've done this and I've had a good year at it. I'll open it up for nominations.
Chairman Tyler, I'd like to nominate Ms. Shannon Mueller for chairman, Dr. Gary Compton for vice chairman, and Mr. Peyton Parker for secretary.
Any other nominations? We just do a...
Motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion to approve the nominations?
Motion to approve.
Motion by...
Mr. Cardio.
Second.
Second by Mr. Austin.
Okay.
Okay, all in... Just do all in favor, you want to do a roll call, or...
How do you want to do it?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Passed, and new officers will be in place. But Ms. Mueller says I have to do this meeting. Okay, we'll move on to our tabled items. C-2302, Roland and Jennifer Hutchins, presented by Roland and Jennifer Hutchins.
I haven't done this before, so...
Press to speak. You want me to help you out?
There you go.
Thank you. We are just seeking a conditional use permit to allow us to bring our horse to our home. And I guess you can see up there, the home is separated from the rest of the property by a vinyl rail fence, and then the rest of the property is fenced. There's a barn, an existing barn and pond on the property. The house, we just recently bought, and I think prior to us moving there, maybe in a few years past, they had a horse or horses there. It is for our personal use. We have seven adopted children, and through the process of adoption, through foster care, we found that horses were very healing and therapeutic for our children. And so, in the move that we've had recently, we have had to board the horse, and it's something that we would like to see... We would like to see him at our home. I think it would be good for our children and for our family. And I think that we try to lay out everything on the site plan there with regard to the fencing and the gates. That's all existing and has been in place prior to our purchasing the home, since it had horses before. So, I don't know if you have questions for me, or if I need to explain anything else.
To the commission?
You want staff comments first?
Sure. Staff comments first.
Okay. The ingress and egress to the property is acceptable, the off-street parking and loading area is acceptable, refuse areas acceptable, utilities, screening is not applicable, there will have no signs, the yard, they have acceptable yard requirements for one horse only, that's all you can have, is one horse, because of the size. The size and the shape is acceptable, and they have submitted, as you saw in that drawing, a grazing plan, which meets all the requirements for the grazing plan. So, we don't see any conditions other than the grazing plan to be something that's needed on this one.
Any comments from the audience? Please state your name and address.
Yes, I'm Ron Ellenbarger, and I live at 2050 Cambridge, across the street. My daddy's got the little house, 2104, and we just want to support this. We have no opposition to this.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the audience? Now, I can go to the commission.
Yeah, you can.
This is a conditional use permit, right?
Correct. And it's to this applicant at this location.
Right.
It may be transferred.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote, Mr. Parker.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardell.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes. Passed as 9-0.
Staff will prepare the resolution. It goes to council on the 28th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next to this, L-2301, Mill Creek Nursing Facility, with a variance B-2322, entrances, structures, back and sides, and screening. This is presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Brandon Rush with ESI. Believe the commission's familiar with this from last month, but this is a nursing facility. It went through and got approved in 2020. They applied for grading permit, that's why there's some work going on there in the aerial. Large-scale expired before they could really start in earnest on the building, so basically, we're asking for approval of these plans to construct the facility.
Staff comments?
Other than the variances that they're asking for, it's just standard comments from planning.
And just a few notes from engineering. We'd like to see a note that says the pond... That's really... A note that says the pond should be sowed to the 100-year water surface elevation, and just a note that retaining walls over four feet need to be designed by an engineer.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. Can you verify that the elevations that the original large-scale was supposed to be built out is what's out there now? Or will it be brought up to that level if it's too low, or something like that? We did a site visit recently, and the elevations that are out there here in the past few days are close to subgrade for the building. Okay. And you'll verify that as you go through construction to make sure it's on there? Okay, can we go to the landscaping plan? This shows that the canopy along the street is to be maintained. How much of that has been removed? Because we don't have any idea what's there, what was there when we approved it a year ago, and what's been taken out as part of that new process? The only trees and shrubs that have been removed is for construction of that sewer line. Okay. And were those anticipated to be removed when it was originally approved? Because it says, "Existing canopy to be remained as a 25-foot street buffer," and it appears that some of them are gone. Some of them are gone. I think the sewer was shown on the original plan. But, I mean, driving out there, there's a lot of mature trees that are there that will remain, and I think honestly, the screening is better than planting a bunch of sticks that are this big. Well, I don't disagree with that, assuming that all of those stay where they're there, but nothing's marked, so we know what's not going to be taken out. My question is, when we go out there to inspect it, do we know what's supposed to stay and what's not supposed to stay, and can that be identified, so our inspector knows that they didn't take out more than they were supposed to, or something needs to be put back? And the reason I ask is because I know we've got some adjacent property owners who are concerned about lights and those kind of things, and that's part of what that perimeter screening is for. There shouldn't be any more tree removal over there at all. You know, the term "shouldn't" is not real comforting. You realize that, don't you? If you'll tell me it won't be removed, that sounds a lot better than "shouldn't be." Well, if... Because you're asking for a screening variance, right? What screening variance are you asking for? We're asking for the existing trees to remain as the screening. Okay, that's the screening you're asking for, so how do we know what existing trees are going to remain, when it just says the canopy will be there? That's my concern. Can you submit something to us that show what you intend to retain, so that we know that screening requirement is being met? Did we load any of the pictures that's in the packet? Okay. You should have sent some pictures in your packet, I believe, of what the tree area looks like out there, if you can open up your packet. That's my only concern, because you're asking for a variance with screening, but we really don't have anything identified that we know we're going to keep. Okay, coming back to that in a minute. Do we have the elevations on here? Y'all saw the elevations in the... Okay, and those were approved last time. I don't see that there's any change in the elevations, so I think there isn't an issue with the elevations, as far as that's concerned. And the entrance, they're asking for the variance for the entrance, because it doesn't face the public street. It faces kind of to the northwest of the site, and I don't see a problem. My only concern, based on what we had last time and what we have this time, is what... It was my concern last time. What is that canopy going to stay? Seeing that there's been so much change to that site already. That's the only comment I have.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission?
Do you know if there's going to be any lighting in the entryway? I didn't see any on the road that leads up to it. I didn't see any lights there to illuminate the entry.
I believe there's a proposed street light at the intersection, talking about the intersection of 48th Street.
No, I'm talking about the, as you enter the property, come up the main entrance. I didn't see any lighting there, and then also, I didn't see what I would call adequate lighting on the south end of the building, and that's primarily safety reasons, right, for both of those? I'm just curious.
I think we did add lighting on the south side of the building. I did see that comment. Ron, did you look at the lighting plan, or is that something Steve looks at?
I looked at it. They did update the lighting plan. That was one of my original comments, and they corrected that on their pre-submission. So, there is lighting back there.
Is there lighting on the driveway, except at the intersection?
There's, there is lighting on the driveway. There's not down on 48th, because they previously have been given a waiver for street improvements.
Okay.
So, that's why there's no lighting there at the actual entrance, but there is further in that was, that was fine.
Any other comments?
I think we just need an answer on the, on the screening, Brianna. If you're relying on, we're relying on that for variance, you've got to give us something.
I mean, we're saying that it's going to remain.
So, how do we make sure that it remains? There's...
I think if any trees are removed, they need to be replaced. I'm not going to say that a single tree won't be, need to be removed, but if it is, it will be replaced. Okay. So, we'll put that in the notes, that any trees that are removed will be replaced with a tree that meets the city standards? Yes. Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Is there a way to validate, like, what we're talking and when that happens?
Well, Ron will be the one who goes out and inspects it, and he'll identify what's there, and then we'll know if some are taken out, when we get ready to do the inspection at the end, whether or not there's enough. Okay? Ron, does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay. That way, we know what's there today, and then we will know what needs to be there when the time comes. That's just something extra we're picking up, instead of the engineer providing us with that information on the site plan. It should be noted.
We still don't know how much has disappeared between this and the thing, but...
No, we don't. We'll at least know what's there today.
You're doing your type of variances first?
All together.
You want the variances all together?
That's fine.
Okay.
Nobody has yet.
Oh, we need a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
I'm slow tonight. Call vote, Ms. Mueller.
Cardell.
We're doing it all together?
Yes.
Just make sure I'm clear on those, because it would be on the notes, as far as what was stated.
Yes, that we, that we will identify the trees that are out there, and if any are removed, they will be replaced, and all that has to be done before they can give a seat of up. Or they have to come back and ask for a variance, if it's something different. Okay?
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Passed as 9-0. Variance is due. Now, we'll go to the large scale. This will be a motion subject to staff comments.
And that's where it gets put into the record. The staff comment is that's how we take care of that screening thing, okay?
I hear a motion?
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion by Ms. Mueller.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cloud.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardell.
Yes.
Passed as 9-0.
Thank you.
Good go. Thank you. Move on to public hearing rezonings. R-2305, Hector Orellana and Marta Mansia, presented by Nathan Crouch and Sidney Tolbert.
Good evening. Nathan Crouch with Bluen Associates. Clients are requesting to rezone property at, off Thompson Street, pardon me, looking for the exact address here.
920.
920 Thompson Street, from C-2 to C-5, in order to put in an event center. Clients have father and son, Hector and Wilbur Oriana here. They've enlisted the services of an architect, and Bluen Associates is in the process of getting out there to do a boundary survey around the property, so the architect can put together the plans for that, for whenever they come in, and request those approvals. At this time, we're just requesting the rezone C-2 to C-5 on the 1.34 acres. There's an existing building and parking there, and Mr. Oriana currently owns the property and says that there's a various, it's basically a little resale shop, while they're allowing some folks to resell some purses and stuff like this in the space, while they're going through the, these processes to get their event center up and running. So, clients are here this evening. If you have any questions for them, otherwise, I'm here if you have any questions for me.
Staff comments?
Okay, let me remind you, when we do a rezoning request, we're allowing anything that's allowed in that zoning classification is allowed in C-5. You're telling us what they want to do with it right now, but keep in mind, anything that's allowed is allowed. And you've heard me say it before, whatever you consider to be the worst thing that can happen, if that's okay, then we rezon the property, not necessarily what's being talked about tonight. And I say that because all the rest of them are the same way, too. The adopted land use plan indicates commercial use for this property. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, ensure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and improper locations. It should be noted that if anything that happens on there, they have to meet the sign ordinance, the sound ordinances, the anything like that, but that's something we deal with when we get into the next phase, not just the rezoning portion.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission? This will be a call for vote. Call for vote, Ms. Parker.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardell.
Yes.
Cloud.
Passed as 8-1.
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on the 28th.
Thank you.
Move on to R-2306, Hobot LLC, presented by Clint Howell and Carl Cabot.
Good evening. My name's Clint Howell, co-owner of Hobot LLC, and we have a property at 5576 North Oak Street, and we're looking to rezone from A-1 and C-2 to I-1 and C-2. Our intentions on this was to follow zoning to the north and the south, which included a portion of the C-2. If you notice, the C-2 running all the way up to the top, we want to carry that C-2 through just as it's drawn to the north, and then the I-1, we wish to keep the I-1 similar to the I-1 to the north and the south.
Staff comments?
Again, let me say that anything that is allowed in an I-1 or C-2 zone is what is allowed. We're not rezoning this for any specific project at this time. The comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial and industrial uses for this area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Insulate industrial sites from other activities by providing sufficient buffers to reduce nuisance and hazard exposures to surrounding non-industrial areas. We do have one letter, one email that was submitted in opposition. It's a property owner that lives at 5576 North Oak Street, and his wife that live directly across in front of 5576, and they both have background in chemistry in terms of several concerns about Ameripolish moving their manufacturing facility near residential area. Again, let me say, that is not what we're rezoning the property for tonight. We're looking at commercial and industrial. When and if they submit a large-scale development plan for that kind of development, we will deal with those issues at that time. Okay? And their rezoning, or their opposition letter will be included in the, in the record. Okay? And I think that's the only one I have.
Any comments from the audience? Please, please state your name, address, and...
I didn't realize it started at 5:00.
I'm Ben Fernandez. It's 5630 Garnett Drive. So, I realize, you know, we're not getting into the nuts and bolts of it all, but if you've ever been down Oak Street, towards the south side, it is pretty heavily commercialized. Towards the north, there's not really a lot of commercial buildings or anything. We simply don't have the infrastructure. If you drive down the road, the nodes, the road is narrow, it actually falls off, there's no sidewalks, there's houses on the, it'll be the left side. We're directly across the street. There's probably 100 kids that get picked up from the apartment. So, there's a lot of, there's just a lot of issues with it. So, anyhow, I just wanted to kind of voice those concerns, and if you've ever been down the road, I encourage you to drive down and just take a look at the condition it's in now. There's literally trash all over the property, the barn's falling down. It's really just a deplorable situation, you know, that they've let it get to, and so, you know, what is our recourse as homeowners in that area? You know, what's our promise? You know, going forward, what does that look like? And quite frankly, you know, just having all those chemicals around, if you look at the flooding zone, it's flooded many times there. What about the wastewater effluent? We're all on step systems. What will that look like? So, those are just some of my concerns, and I think they're very valid points when you consider even just the opening stages. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I live at 800 Amethyst Drive, in the same subdivision, in the Chantel subdivision, and my concern is we have a lot...
Excuse me, could you state your name, please?
Ann Julian.
Thank you.
And we have a lot of people that jog and exercise and, you know, walk their children and their babies and whatnot up and down in our subdivision, and if we're talking about at some point, I mean, the traffic is so bad in the morning, the concrete people just pull right out in front of anybody coming down the road from the subdivision. I can only imagine if you add manufacturing with multiple employees coming in and out of that sub, you know, next to our, right next to our subdivision, and not to mention that this subdivision has, on average, $400,000 houses. I don't think most people want to live across the street from a manufacturing or any other commercial. Like I said, like the gentleman before me said, there's plenty of manufacturing, but those are, have been like grandfathered in. There's not really anything new, other than the ESS and a few just warehouses, like storage things, pods or things like that. A manufacturing company or any other thing like that would just add, you're talking about semi-truck traffic, you're talking about all of the employees coming in and out, all hours of the day and night. I just think that's a real detriment to our neighborhood and our property values. So, that's my biggest concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Comments, questions from the commission?
Can you confirm that your intent is to do the front portion of your property C-2 to match what's on the screen?
Yes.
In front of us?
And that was...
Do the back portion as I-1 to also match what's there as well?
That's what the legal description showed.
Yeah.
That's correct. We wanted to maintain that, that commercial through there. We don't need commercial property, but we thought that would be best to maintain what's already been done to the north and the south.
Are you partially that off separately?
If you look at that exhibit, it shows you the, the boundaries of what's going to be changed, and the legal description that will go in ordinance reflects that, too.
Isn't it being C-2 in the front part? Are there restrictions that are things that can be put in there to help block or do you think...
They would be required...
...the property across the street?
Yeah, they would be required to screen along the parking lot as part of the commercial design standards. They will have to meet commercial design standards for the structures in the building. They have to have a lighting plan that addresses so that there's no light spillage over into that, and they have to have perimeter landscaping. They will be required to do street improvements along the street, and it's Collector Street on the master street plan, they'll have to put a sidewalk on their side, actually, the trail is on their side. So, all of that will be handled with the large scale when it comes to drainage, water and sewer, all of those as part of the development process itself, which is, comes next, after it gets rezoned. Okay?
I tend to think that, given that C-2 in the front, this is probably a win for us, instead of the whole piece going industrial. And I, and Patsy mentioned, hopefully, drain, you know, problems with drainage should get fixed with development, street improvements get done with the development project, so hopefully, this will bring some better, you know, better changes. I think the reason that, the reason that I'm really feel compelled to support industrial is because there's a railroad back there, and that's, industrial space looks for railroads. And so, it's, it's very unlikely that that's going to be something besides that. So, I think if we can get the, we can get the I-1 in the back, and we can get the C-2 in the front, I think that's a, I think that's a plus for that.
And you have to remember that this was in Bethel Heights that came to us, and street improvements evidently wasn't required as much in Bethel Heights as what we have now. I don't know if they had it on their master street plan as a collector street or not, it's always been on ours. So, those kind of things are different. And if you want to make a comment, you've got to go back up to the, to the microphone.
Do you know when the street is proposed to be?
I don't know that we have anything on the plan right now to do it. It, you know, it's on the master street plan. It's not to say it wouldn't happen tomorrow or in the next bond issue, but it's not one that's come to the top yet. Yeah. The 412 bypass is going through there to the, into this area just to the south. So that whole area is changing. We got to kind of address those issues as all that happens, too. So there's a, there's a lot going on in this area of the city that's going to have to be addressed as that, as that development occurs, too. Yes, sir.
Do I need to restate my name, or can I just speak?
Go ahead and restate, and then we don't have to look it up.
Okay, it's Ben Fernandez. So last comment, when I mentioned flooding, last year, as early as last year, the city of Lowell actually had one of their drainage culverts back up. So there were some neighbors on Apple Blossom that actually got flooded as a result of that, and that's directly adjacent to this property. So I just want to make sure that y'all really understand that by voting yes for that, there are potentials, and they're pretty nasty chemicals. So just, just keep that in mind, please. Thank you.
There is a major flood plain to the north of this. It has to be taken into account when they design their building and their drainage and all that kind of stuff. Engineering goes through all those as we look at new projects when they're submitted to. They'll have to detain on site, for one thing.
Do you mind just reminding them what the processes for, like first we rezon?
Yeah, if, if the rezoning is approved, it goes here tonight, it goes to city council at the end of the month. Council approves the rezoning, then the applicant will have to schedule a pre-application conference with staff to go over all these concerns that we have before they submit their plans, and then the plans will be reviewed to make sure that they address all those concerns. And then it comes to the planning commission. Once the planning commission looks at that, approves the large scale, then they got to go back and do the detailed engineering design and all that kind of stuff. And once those are approved, they get a grading permit, they get their building permits. Once all of that is, all of the work is completed, then we go back and inspect to make sure they did everything they said they're going to before they can get a CFO. And that's all the issues that's involved with any kind of development. Yeah.
And you showed up and put your concerns on the record, so that'll be part of the conversation.
And, and if you're an adjacent property owner, you will get notified when they submit the large-scale development plan, too. So you'll have another chance to look at how they're laying all the thing out, how it's, what it's going to look like, and how they're addressing the concerns that you have. Okay? We try really hard to, to make sure we, we address all the issues on the front end so the developer doesn't get surprised, and then to make sure all the adjacent property owners are aware of what, what the concerns are and how we're addressing those. Now, are we perfect? No, but we do work really hard at trying to get all that done.
Any other questions, comments? Call for vote, Mr. Cloud.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Recues.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
No.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Passes seven one with one recues.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 28th. Okay?
Next is R 2307 Jose Gonzalez and Maria De Perez, presented by Jose Gonzalez and Maria De Perez.
Hello, my name's Jose Perez Jr. My dad, Jose Perez Gonzalez. We're trying to rezone our, his property 2975 North Jefferson from single family to multifamily.
Staff comments?
The land use plan indicates heavy industrial use for this area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies is recommended for approval. I think that's an area of the land use plan that needs to be updated. Encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale. And if you'll notice, the property to the north of this is zone MF4 as well. So it's not SF1 was kind of contrary to what the rest of the area was.
Any comments from the audience? To the commissioners, a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote, Ms. Mueller.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 28th.
All right, thank you guys. Thank you. Move on to preliminary plats, replats, and final plats. We've got PP 2301 Gap at the Crossings presented by Craft and Toll and Associates.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ally Carr with Craft and Toll. What you have before you today is a preliminary plat for Gap at the Crossings. So what we are presenting to you is essentially a street improvement project that will develop Apple Road, a new road Gap Avenue, and George Avenue that will connect from 64th to Gene George. With these street improvements, we are creating eight lots that will come through with their separate large scales. What you will also see as a part of this plan set is regional detention. So whereas each development doesn't have to come through with their own detention system, we are taking care of the detention for this area that you can see in those lighter shaded kind of ponds in the center along Gap Avenue. Each of the different streets have typical sections that are being reviewed by engineering that will be consistent with a master street plan that we've also submitted to kind of amend the master street plan in this area to follow the kind of master plan for this entire property in the future. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
The only correction I have to make is, once a commercial subdivision is approved, you don't have to submit a large scale. Each of the separate lots can be done with a non-large scale unless they have to have variances. So-
Yes, ma'am.
We're, we're looking at all of the infrastructure that goes with it with this, and so you wouldn't have to come back and see, just so everybody understands that. Okay?
Staff comments?
Planning staff has only standard comments at this time.
I know a lot of these comments will end up being addressed in the construction plans, and I do have a couple of questions. So regional detention was done for Trails at the Crossing, and it's currently in its interim conditions phase. Will that regional facility be completed with this project, or is this project intended to only use the detention ponds that are being built? I also had a question about Gap Avenue and whether that would be permeable pavers. It was unclear in the design. If so, we will need detailed permeable paver design with a maintenance plan, and this street needs to be private with an access easement and privately maintained. Add trickle channels to the pond and drainage easements around the ponds. When on-street parking is provided, this is referencing Gap Avenue, sidewalks should be adjacent to the back of curb. Show how sidewalks will tie into the existing sidewalks on 64th Street. Provide a signage plan, a striping plan, geotech report to justify the pavement section, and plan and profile for the drainage. Actually, I think I left a page. One second.
Any comments?
Then there is some changes to the master street plan that, that engineering staff can support.
Okay, and then the last comment is show crosswalks at every intersection.
Okay. And there's, they're proposing amendment to the master street plan that removes, the master street plan shows a collector street that is on the east side of the apartment complex that goes straight on up through there with the construction of 64th Street. That really is where the collector needs to be. We don't need another one in that location. So the master street plan, what they're proposing, we, we, we support, the master street plan would be amended to show that 64th Street is now the collector street, not the one that's on there. Correct?
That's correct. We would request a waiver be asked for in the meantime until the master street plan can be amended.
The only other is, is that direct connection out to 112, we're asking that there be a connection be done where the roundabout comes in at the relocation of Fletcher rather than straight across through there. I'm not sure why you just went straight across through there, other than you were trying to get another access to 112. Ally, is that why it's on there?
Yes, so we're, we're working with engineering staff on kind of revising this to meet those concerns, to address the roundabout connection.
Okay, and then it, it has downtown commercial, and that's really not an applicable title for the street in this location. So we need to work with engineering, make sure we come up with, with a cross section of what that's going to be.
Yes, we'll be sure that we work with them with an acceptable master street plan amendment.
Okay. Katie, is that all of that?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, we're ready for-
Any comments from the audience?
Yes, I'm John Reddish, and I, you live at 5428 Apple Road, which is kind of the northeast quadrant of the roundabout there on Apple Road and Mr. Gene George Boulevard there. I, I'd just like a clarification. What is planned for the Apple Road on the north side of the road, basically that would be my side of the road, if and when it goes on toward, toward interstate in the future? What's going to be taken off of any property there, if any?
Well, nothing's going to be done with this project because they're only working between Gene George and 64th Street. The master plan, the master street plan shows the collector to go all the way to the, to the west, I mean, to the east, but it's, nothing's being done with that to date. And the city doesn't have that as a project that we're taking on.
Okay, nothing, nothing's coming off the north side from, from, okay. Well, I-
It'll affect your property. Now, Ally, y'all are proposing to only do street improvements on the south side of the road.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
The full length of the property. Right.
So what we've designed is-
You need to go to the microphone, please.
Yeah, I'll circle it.
What we've designed and what you see on the plans is both sides of the street just for ease of construction in the future, but we will only install on our side, on the south side. Yes, ma'am.
Right. And it would be up to the council if they decide they want to do both sides of the street at the same time. But right now, they're, they're only required to do their half the street, which is the side, the south side of the street itself.
Okay, I, I basically was just trying to be neighborly and ask for my neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
A couple of comments. Is it Ally? Is that your name? Sorry.
Yes, sir.
It probably, you probably stated, it's probably, I could probably see it, but I just want confirmation. Do the streets that you're installing, seems like there's three east to west. Are they including sidewalks, bypass? Are we doing all that as well?
Y- yes, sir, they will.
Okay. And then also, are the ponds that you show, are they retention ponds or detention ponds?
They are detention ponds, so they will be dry.
With the trickle channel as Katie asked for.
Ten four.
And for a change, we're doing regional detention instead of individual detention ponds on every, every lot.
I prefer regional retention, but this is a step in the right direction, I suppose.
Any other comments? This will be a motion subject, staff comments? Motion, Mr. Cloud?
Second.
Second, Ms. Mueller.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is RP 2302 Elm Springs Heights presented by-
We got to do the replat for Black Oak, just to release-
Oh, yeah, you're right. I skipped it. Let's back up. Okay, RP 2301 Black Oak Plaza in Chester Heights. It's presented by Expedient Civil Engineering. They're not here.
I don't see them.
You know, just hold off on that to the end. Now we'll go to Ellen. I told you we're going down there.
You were going, you were right.
RP 2302 Elm Springs Heights presented by Satterfield Land Surveyors.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Jimenez. I'm here representing the property owner, Mr. Michael Lewis. The surveyors working on this project couldn't be here tonight, so-
Okay, now wait a minute. Do we have, we have his? Okay, never mind. That's the one you just gave me. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
The surveyor couldn't be here tonight, so they asked for somebody to represent the property owner. So here I am. We're just doing a, they're just doing a replat of the, of the property into two, two lots, two residential lots.
And they're extending the property line to the west?
On the west.
So the lots are now deeper than the, than the one lot is now?
Correct.
And then they're splitting those, that deeper section into two lots, correct?
Yes.
Okay. It's a little bit more than just splitting those, that one lot.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Staff comments?
Just a minute. Do we have, let's do staff comments, then we, then we, but you have to go up there. You have to go up to the microphone to ask a question.
Planning staff has only standard comments.
Engineering wise, no comments? Okay.
Any comments from the audience? Please state your name and address.
I am Kathy Retzloff, and we live in the property just north of where the replat is.
Okay.
And my question is-
Can you move to the microphone so we can hear you a little better? Thank you.
Okay, so we got this piece of paper in the mail, and I guess I just want, maybe in layman's terms, what exactly is, is happening? Is, is this the way it currently is now, and you're going to make it into these three things? Is that-
Right now, it's two lots. And what they will do is have one lot that faces out onto Roma Drive, and the property line for it will be moved closer to Roma Drive, and the piece that's remaining will be split into two lots. So they'll have two lots with frontage onto Highway 112.
This here. Okay, so the question I have is, and this is just based on something that we've been told by another neighbor, is that this, this lot that's going to be 5C, we were told that there was a septic system on this lot that belongs to the property that's south of there. And, I mean, if we were interested in getting that property, we would want to know that. So we would want to know if there's-
They were supposed to notify or on their survey show us where the location of all septic systems are. And the surveying company didn't pick up that their septic field was on an adjacent lot. So if they have a concern, they probably need to get in touch with Satterfield and have that looked at because they're supposed to show us all that stuff. Because you see at the, the houses that's existing, you see where the septic tank is on there.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking the question, so.
And so we, they did not pick anything up that there was any septic systems on this track lot or this 5E that they want to correct, that there's any, there's an overhead power line that goes across it. You can see that that goes across there, but they didn't pick up anything.
Okay, well, that was, that was my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? To the commission? This is a motion subject, staff comments? Motion, Mr. Parker? Second, Mr. Austin?
Parker? Tyler?
Yes.
Excuse me. Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
If you want this to go to council for next Tuesday, after, next Tuesday evening's approval, the ordinance needs to be in our office by noon tomorrow.
By noon tomorrow. Thank you.
Next is large-scale developments. L 2302 Hillcrest Village presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Brandon Rush with ESI. This is a previously approved in 2021 large-scale development that's been under construction. This is the same plan as previously approved, only changes adding, splitting it up into three phases.
Staff comments?
And the good news on this one is, last month, we had a variance request to remove the sidewalk, and they figured out how to fix it where the sidewalk still goes through, and we don't have to have a variance anymore for that. And now they're asking for just the phase lines as shown on, on this portion. Now, it is changed so that the phase line actually goes to the north side of the street in Phase 1, to the street that accesses all of this first phase will be continued all the way back to the list station and the park on the south, on the west side, rather than the middle of the street like it was originally shown. It's kind of hard to see the face line, but it does go along that north side of the street, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, this will be a motion subject, staff comments? Motion by Mr. Parker?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller?
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
It passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Next is L 2312 Project Mayflower with variance of screening requirements, B 2316, waiver of master street improvements, W 2306, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Brandon Rush with ESI. This is a 104,000 square foot building, as well as proposed parking, driveways, detention, et cetera, in the growing industrial park off of Kendrick Avenue. in the growing industrial park off of Kendrick Avenue. The waiver is for street improvements along Kendrick Avenue, because the city is currently working on that as a city project. The variance is to let the, so there's residential to the south, requiring, uh, eight-foot fence and two rows of trees for screening. We are asking to only provide the two rows of trees and not the eight-foot fence.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, final approval of this project will require that an informal plat be approved that will separate the impacted piece of land from the larger parcel. Once completed, this informal plat will need to replace pages, or I'm sorry, page two of nineteen within the plan set, and this is something that has been discussed with ESI. Uh, show the parcel number of the property in a prominent font above the legal description, and this is another one that's been discussed with ESI. This will, uh, be provided upon completion of that informal plat. Uh, streetlights are required at each intersection and along the street at intervals of three hundred to three hundred and fifty feet as measured along the center line of the street. Show location and state plane coordinates for each streetlight for which a waiver has been requested. Streetlight fixture shall be, uh, by LSI Lighting Model Crossover, uh, waiver requested. Screening is required along the south side of the property as it is adjacent to residential uses. Variance has been requested. Developer is responsible for street improvements along Kendrick Avenue and Old Wire Road. Waiver has been requested. And a lighting plan is required displaying at least one-foot candle in all parking and pedestrian areas. It was determined that, uh, there will not be lighting on the sides and the back of the building.
Brandon, the waiver is actually for Kendrick and O R Road, right? Well, actually, the Public Facilities Board is asking for the waiver on O R Road rather than this applicant?
Um, the applicant is the Springdale Public Facilities Board in both instances.
Okay, so we're, we're really should have both waivers on here at this time.
Um, this first, the Kendrick waiver is associated with this project. The Old Wire Road wa- road, sorry, Road waiver is for all of the Public Facilities Board property, not just this property.
Okay. We can't leave it, because they would be required to do the improvements to O R Road, the length of this property if it wasn't public, unless they were asking for the whole thing. So we'll, we'll get to that in a minute, okay?
Engineering comments on this project, submit a PDF of the signed and sealed drainage report to engineering. The developer is required to improve the abutting street to the city of Springdale standards in accordance with the master street plan for which a waiver has been requested on both of those streets. Show all proposed or existing streetlights. Waiver's been requested on Kendrick and Old Wire. I think that's all I got.
Any comments from the audience? Please state your name and address.
Brian Wilson, thirty-six, sixty-eight, O R Road. I'm here on behalf of my mother that lives there. She's ninety-two years old and don't get around real well. Uh, this, I haven't heard anything about this deal. I'm here on another project, on the Kendrick Road deal, but can someone tell me what this business is, or what is? Shouldn't we have been notified, shouldn't she have been notified about this?
Where does, let me look at who the notifications were given to. Brandon, can you answer that question?
Which, which piece is it?
When you say this is at Kendrick and O R Road, and she lives at O R Road in Kendrick.
Is it this, this Wilson?
Yes.
Leona Wilson piece?
We have had no notification on this, period. We know nothing about this.
Uh, what's her name?
Leona Wilson.
She's on the list of adjacent property owners that were notified by certified mail. Does she get a notice in the newspaper that, I mean, in the mail that there was a certified letter waiting for?
No. The only certified letter we got is dealing with the trees and, uh, no fence on the southern property line. Also, we have not received any information on the Kendrick Avenue project, period. She's had people walking through her yard, putting up stakes and, and flags and stuff, and no one will tell us anything what's going on. I think a little common courtesy would have been appreciative if someone had sent a letter or someone come by and told her.
I don't see that. Brandon, do you wanna address the, how, how the notices were sent out for the large-scale and the, I mean, they're, she's listed on the large-scale and on the, uh, variance request. Was it one letter sent for both issues at the, with the same letter?
Yeah, uh, Sarah's getting them. Um, I think we got the green cards back from every property except this one, if memory serves, um, so.
The copy of the notice that was sent from the Spring, was sent to, to a lack of construction of a screening, fence trees along the south side of the property, that was the one for the board of adjustments. Was there a second letter sent out for the large-scale itself? I don't see it in the file.
Yeah, I, I, there was two letters that went with it.
Okay.
And then we have the white.
And you only got one green card back?
Now we got. We have the green card for Wilson, for us.
For both of them? Okay. Rick, can you look at, see what he has in his hand?
Uh, the top document says, uh, to all owners of land lying adjacent to, at, uh, to the property location, east end of Kendrick Avenue, uh, owned by Public Facilities Board. The purpose of this request is to, and this is a variance to allow double row of trees as screening with no fence along southern property line.
And there's the one for the variance. What, is there one for the large-scale? What does it say?
Uh, yes, notification of public hearing before the Springdale Planning Commission on a large-scale development plan application to all owners of land lying adjacent to the property.
Okay, so you have two separate notices, one for the variance request and one for the large-scale. Yeah, they make, they probably were in the same envelope. Yeah, so you get all the information at one time. It's the applica-, it's the application for the construction of this facility that you see on the screen up there. And the other one is the variance for the screening that's on that side. That's the notification that you have in your hand, the two notifications. Now, as far as the street improvement itself, I don't know what the procedure was for acquiring right-of-way or any of the public notices for the street improvements, that's not my department. You, you gotta go up there.
I didn't get that. Could you try again?
No. Sometimes Siri backs in when she doesn't belong.
Yeah, so offer letters have been sent out for the street right-of-way and for the utility easement. And I actually spoke with Mr. Wilson yesterday in my office.
Oh, okay.
And, and his mother. So we've been talking about the right-of-way. We have not gotten into the plans and talked about what's being constructed.
Okay, so you, you were aware that she talked to engineering yesterday? Okay, okay, so that. You need to come to the microphone.
What I'm saying is, but she was never notified about anything on the Kendrick project. And she just had people come, I mean, she was upset they had people going into her yard, putting stakes and flags in the deal and didn't know what was going on.
Okay.
I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't there have been a letter?
Let me ask you a question. Was the property owners notified that the appraisers and the, the surveyors would be out there?
I, I don't, I don't have firsthand knowledge about that.
Okay, that, because that was before your time, so I don't, I can't answer that either. I don't know if that was done ahead of time. Normally, the property owners are notified that the appraisers will be there and the city will be surveying the property. I don't know if it was done on this case or not, because that was prior to Ben's time.
I, I was actually the, I'm the appraiser on this project, and I sent out, our company sent out letters.
Okay.
But I don't know if the city sent out letters before us.
Okay.
So, back to this, what is this business that is going in?
The name of the business is Mayflower. They're building the, the building that you see here. And it's a, I, I don't know what kind of business it is necessarily, other than it meets, it is a permitted use in this zoning classification. I don't know that we get a description of what kind of business it is. It shows us that they're gonna have trucks going in and out, how they're gonna be located, where the offices are gonna be, what the building itself is gonna look like, that kinda stuff. The landscaping that's there, the drainage is taken care of. It meets those minimum requirements for what we have for any industrial development it has. Drainage, uh, the people that are buying have worked through the Public Facilities Board for purchase of the property. I don't know, Bill, if you've got anything else that you can tell us about the property itself or not?
I'm Bill Rogers, uh, Springdale Chamber of Commerce, and, and here representing the Springdale Public Facilities Board, yes. The, uh, Public Facilities Board entered into a, a contract. We've not closed on this property yet. Uh, it, what is planned is a hundred thousand-square-foot facility that will have, uh, it's a, it's a regional company that is relocating, seeking to relocate in Springdale. Uh, computerized steel fabrication plant is what, uh, they will plan to do with this, with approximately fifty-plus jobs initially. And that's, uh, what's, uh, that's what they're planning to do in this location.
Did that answer your question? Okay.
Any other comments from the audience?
You have to come to the microphone.
So is, is this now zone industrial, where it's not agriculture anymore?
Oh, it was du- zone industrial quite a long time ago. When the Public Facilities Board purchased the property, it was rezoned to industrial at that time. And, Bill, you have to help me, how long ago was that? Yeah, I, they've owned the property for several years and got it rezoned shortly after they purchased it for industrial development.
So the five houses that are down along Kendrick Avenue, then they just have to live with what's going in on them?
Well, they, we have not changed the zoning on any of those properties, and those adjacent property owners were notified when the property was rezoned. The planning commission recommended to council, council rezoned the property. That's the process that's gone through. And now if it's a permitted use, it's not a question of whether they can go in there or not. It's a question of how are they fit on the site and do they meet the minimum requirements? And that's what we're looking at today.
Please state your name and address.
Frida Willingham, thirteen oh-three Kendrick. And I did not get notified of this either. I got, the only notification I got that I was gonna have an appraiser was from her out. Um, they didn't, they came out and put the stakes out. I had no idea when they were there. As far as the packet that he's talking about, I got a thing in the mailbox saying that I had a certified, something certified from the city, but I was home all three days, and I never received it. I had to call them, I think.
Well.
At Engineering, they finally emailed it to me.
The way that the process works, they go to the post office, they register it certified, mail return receipt requested. The post office delivers it to you. If they can't get to you where you sign the car, then they'll send you a notice, and you have to go down to the post office and pick it up.
They never gave me a notice to come down to the, the post office. They said that, that they would try again to deliver it, but I was home off, the last, the first three days. I was on the day they delivered that, and they never came to the door.
I mean, I.
I know.
I appreciate that, but that's not something we have any control over.
Right.
It's how often the, the, uh.
I'm just saying, we.
Post office tries to deliver, because that's the process that's required. They follow that procedure as far as that's concerned. And did we get her letter back?
No, you didn't get my letter back. I haven't sent it back yet.
Did?
I've got it. I've got it, but I have not sent it back.
Okay, what was your name?
Frida Willingham. Also, on the Frida Way Warehouse that's right next door to me. I was just wondering when they were going to put the fence up.
Well, they can occupy the building to, I mean, all the requirements of what they were supposed to. I don't know where they are in that process yet. If they don't have an occupancy permit, do they? I don't think so. So all that has to be done before they can move into it.
Okay, so will we get a notification before they move into it?
No.
So if they move into it and there's not a wall up?
Then you need to call the office and let us know. But the way the process works, when they're ready to move in, they will contact the inspector. It takes the building inspector, it takes the fire department, it takes engineering and takes planning to go look at it and make sure everything that's been done. And once all of those people have signed off on it, they can get a certificate of occupancy and a business license.
Okay.
That's how the process works.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not gonna tell you they don't move in ahead of time, but I can tell you that's the process that we have in place and that's how it works.
So if they move in and that wall, that fence ain't up, I'd call you?
You call the office and we'll get somebody to go out there and look at it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? This will be to the commission.
I have a question about the fence. So help me understand, help me understand this, because it looks like, so the way this is, the, the entrance to the property is off Kendrick, right? So, so what's?
Houses right here.
And they're, they're right here.
The houses are on the other side of the street, on Kendrick, on the south side. And what you're doing is putting a double row of trees in front of the detention pond and on the sides to provide the screening, but you're not putting a fence in there. Because it would be, uh, tha- that's the, the fencing, I mean, the screening they're providing. Plus you have, how wide is the street? Whatever it is, I don't know.
Eighty feet or sixty feet.
I just thought it was unusual, because we usually don't put fencing out on the.
On the front, correct.
On the front of the property anyhow, so.
That's right. But when it's adjacent to a residential area, that we gotta address that, so that, you know, they put in a double row of trees. And what kind of trees are you putting in? Something that's green from the start?
Um, Willow Oak, Eastern Red Bud, Autumn Blaze, Red Maple.
Nothing, nothing evergreen in there to provide some kinda break on the front, on the start? No?
I'm sure we could change it, but that's, that's what we have proposed right now.
Okay. Put some trees down there that give some screening in the one, not ten and fifteen years from now.
I guess we'll start with the waiver, twenty-three oh-six.
And this is just the waiver of Kendrick. We'll address the waiver on O R when we get to that in the, further on in the process. Are they donating, you're donating the right-of-way, correct?
That was donated, uh, under, uh, prior informal plat.
Okay, so there's no, no right-of-way to be acquired on this piece of property?
And this will be a recommendation to the council?
Right.
Have we wanted, do we wanna do like payment in lieu? Do we want to just recommend approval? Or do we want to recommend denial? It's up to the commission.
So on Kendrick Avenue, we've already got this designed and, and the funds are acquired. So engineering doesn't recommend payment in lieu for this one.
Okay. So I guess it's, uh, recommend to approve?
A waiver, to grant a waiver.
To grant the waiver?
On Kendrick.
Anybody?
Motion to do that.
Oh, it needs a motion, that's right. Got a motion, Mr. Parker? Second by Mr. Austin.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell? Cloud? Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein? Mueller?
Recuse.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes. Passes eight with one recuse. Okay, now we'll go to the variance. This will be a call for the vote for the screening requirements.
Pass, can we ask if the trees are evergreen for the, for the screening?
Brandon, will you make that commitment that will be some evergreen?
Uh, yeah, we can change one row to evergreen and one to deciduous. Does that work?
Okay.
Thank you.
Be a call for the vote?
That's with the screening variance to include that. Okay?
Call to vote, Mr. Parker.
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Recuse.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Passes eight, zero, with one recuse.
I need a motion.
Now we need a motion to approve subject staff comments for the large-scale twenty-three twelve.
Make a motion to approve the large-scale subject staff comments.
Motion, Mr. Parker? Motion, Mr. Parker? Second by Mr. Cloud.
Cloud? Compton? Couch? Hussein? Mueller?
Recuse.
Parker? Tyler? Austin? Cordell?
He passes eight, zero, with one recuse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, I mean, the resolution goes to council on the 28th.
So next is L 2314, Popping Pearls Tea House, presented by ILK.
George with Blue and Associates, we are the engineers on the project. Ms. Helena Nguyen with ILK is available if you have, have any questions. It's an existing structure and she is wanting to kind of create a parking lot and a tea house out of it. There's not going to be a kitchen. And so, we went through the process of getting the, placing a, the handicap area and the parking. I think we meet pretty much all requirements. I am here if you do have any questions, but yeah, we tried to incorporate a little drive-through for her and gave you guys some elevations on there. Something to know about those elevations is, it's a little confusing, but the EFS, where it says 100% on that one, they are talking about the building siding itself. The stone that's 73 square feet in that back area, there's actually going to be a small stone wall that will have planters and stuff to help meet city requirements. And the stone itself is not a part of the structure, but it is part of a, kind of a screening area for that, for that back area of the building. So, if you do have any questions, I am here.
And there one more elevation, too. This is what the front that faces Elm Springs Road is going to look like. Are those the colors?
As I understand it, but it is a computer rendering, so I don't know how realistic to life it is, but it should be pretty close.
So it's going to have that pink neon over the awnings and the blue?
Oh, I didn't even look at the awnings. I'm guessing that those are probably going to be painted black, but I, architect's not available. He had a prior engagement, so.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to hold it up, but I would like to see actual elevations next time we have large scale.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, a lighting plan is required displaying at least one foot candle in all parking and pedestrian areas. I believe I spoke with George the other day and they are waiting to, is it the architect? That's going to be the mechanical engineer to get those. And then finally, signed design materials and placement should complement the overall architectural design of the building. And it was stated that these are, the signs will be provided by, again, is that the architect?
Katie, do you have any comments? Where'd Katie go? Oh, shoot, there she is.
All right, show a 20-foot easement around the pond. I know you said you had put it there. I just couldn't find it on the plans. Storm sewer schedule on grading plan shows two 18-inch RCPs, says outlet, but plans and drainage report, so show three. Please clarify. Add the general note to the site plan that states a City of Springdale Detention Retention Certification Form must be completed, stamped, and signed by a certified professional engineer, post-development, and submitted to the City's Springdale Engineering Department. We also recommend a level spreader or other type of dissipation on the outlet of the pond to help encourage sheet flow on neighboring property or obtain a flowage easement from the downstream property owner. Please show silt fence and wattle around the perimeter of the site as needed on the erosion control plan. Move the bench out of the street right of way. And on the landscape plan, please call out seed and sod types and seeding rates on the planting legend.
So, and they're required an eight-foot fence?
Right.
For large scale?
What's the perimeter fencing? Because it's residential adjacent to it. What are you showing on there? What kind of fence? It's too small to read.
There was, I mean, I don't think it was residential all the way around. There was a lot of commercial around this thing. But I think where we had to, we showed-
They do have a fence that goes all the way around off the top of our heads. We don't recall exactly what the height is. It would be six or eight, whatever it is that is required by ordinance.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission?
Is this next to the Jiffy Lube or that general area? Just east of the Jiffy Lube on that side of the street? Is that where it is?
It's just adjacent to the Jiffy Lube. And then there's a residence just to the north, to the east of this, that, that's why they have to screen on that side, because there's a residence on that side.
This will be most subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion, Ms. Mueller? Do you hear a second? Second, Mr. Parker?
Cloud? Compton? Couch? Hussein? Mueller? Parker? Tyler? Austin? Cordell?
Large scale passes nine, zero. Move on to board of adjustments. B 2317, Rafael and Olga Sandoval, presented by Rafael Sandoval.
Sorry, I'm going to keep this a little, keep this a little short, because I'm kind of losing my voice here. I'm just wanting to build a patio in my parents' backyard and trying to get a reduction from 30 feet to 15 feet in the south side of it.
And you want to explain the situation to us on this one?
Two things going on here. One, there's, this is two fronts. You have the front on Elm Springs Road and the front on Daleen Street. This is the front on Elm Springs Road. They're not going any further south than the existing structure, which is a non-conforming structure that was created that way when we widened the road.
Yeah, I've had a 30-foot setback before the road was widened and now it doesn't, that's why they're asking for the variance. Correct.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, this will be a call for the vote? Call to Mr. Parker?
Compton? Couch? Hussein? Mueller? Parker? Tyler? Austin? Cordell? Cloud?
Passes nine, zero.
Thank you.
Next is B 2318, Ricardo Cardenas and Adam Duke, presented by Ricardo Cardenas and Adam Duke and Judith Yanis.
Good evening. My name is Ricardo Cardenas. I just bought this property on 815 Costalos Lane, like seven months ago, and I'm here to, for the variance of increased fence from three to six. It's the last house. There are only three houses. And it's the last house on, in a corner. And it has like a special kind of shape. But there's no more houses. There's a railroad on the other side.
Staff comments?
I don't think any of us have any comments. Are you just going to, to fence the, which, which side's the west up to the driveway? And then the angle across you there, or how much are you actually going to fence?
No, it's just on the side, on the, on the-
West side? See where the S is on there? Is it that side?
No, I'm not going, it's, yes, where the S is, it's just on the, on that side, which is, yeah, that, that side.
Up to the driveway? Are you going to put a gate across the driveway and go further on to the north with the, with the fence angling to the northeast any?
No, I'm sorry. No, the fence is already, is already there. See that, that's-
Oh, okay.
That's a picture, yes. And that's a picture of the fence right next to the, the house. Yeah, it is.
Okay.
That's the neighbor's house. And it's, it's, our house is the last one.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, it'll be a call for the vote? Call to vote, Mr. Parker?
Couch? Hussein? Mueller? Parker? Tyler? Austin? Cordell? Cloud? Compton?
Passes nine, zero.
Thank you so much.
Next is B 2319, Landon and Kayla Kelly. Variance for, another variance for increased fence height, presented by Landon and Kayla Kelly.
Hi, my name is Landon Kelly. I live at 6556 Harbor Avenue. The request is for a variance along Harbor Avenue to raise the fence height from three to six feet.
Staff comments?
Is there a reason why you couldn't have put it 30 feet back from the street to put it there? And then there wouldn't, you wouldn't have needed a variance?
So the, the property, if, the backyard is a very steep hill. And so, my, I've got two sons and they play in the front yard or wood.
And you're not into the utility easement? Because there's a utility easement along there. Are you right at the edge of the utility easement?
Yes, ma'am. So, we're, I believe we're within regulations as far as the utility easement.
If you're in the utility easement, they need to work on it. They'll take your fence down and they don't have to put it back.
I understand, yeah.
Any comments from the audience? Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Deidra Ashcraft. I live at 6432 Harbor Avenue. Nice to meet you, neighbor. I have no objections to this.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? To the commission, be a call for the vote? Call to vote, Mr. Parker?
Hussein? Mueller? Parker? Tyler? Austin? Cordell? Cloud? Compton? Couch?
Passes nine, zero. Waivers, move on to waivers.
Hugo Castillo?
2307, yes. Hugo Rodriguez Castillo and Maria Torres Martinez, presented by Hugo Rodriguez Castillo and Maria Torres Martinez.
Do we have anybody here?
They not here? So we table this. And we'll move on to W 2308, Springdale Public Facilities Board, presented by ESI.
No, this is the Old Wire Road.
This is the wire.
And this is the full distance of the, all the way up to Reed Avenue, correct?
Correct. Good evening. I'm Bill Rogers with Springdale Chamber of Commerce, here representing the Springdale Public Facilities Board, seeking a waiver of street improvements for the property that runs north and south adjacent to Old Wire Road. You've got the waiver request in front of you. I would just, I would, I would focus on item number five. Extraordinary costs associated with relocation of three significant water mains, 48, 36-inch and 24-inch, as well as fiber optics that run along the west side of Old Wire Road. And we seek a waiver of street improvements for that property.
Staff comments?
Katie's going to comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So traffic counts from North West Arkansas Regional Planning Commission show Old Wire will need to continue to operate as a minor collector into 2045. So engineering does not support the waiver of street improvements on Old Wire Road and would recommend payment in lieu of improvements if the waiver is recommended for approval.
And the Public Facilities Board would prefer not to pursue that option. I would also point out that across the street is Springdale Water Utilities. You can see the five water tanks there. In speaking with Mr. Ward, they have no plans now or in the foreseeable future to ever improve that side of the, of that property. Again, we think a waiver here would be appropriate.
May I remind you, the decision is actually made by the city council, not the planning commission. So your recommendation could be whatever you think is appropriate and the council has to make the final decision.
Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the commission?
There's sidewalks on Kendrick though, right? With the street improvements?
Yeah, they'll, they'll end at Kendrick. They won't be on, any along Old Wire Road.
I would recommend payment in lieu of to the city council. That's what I would recommend.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
We got a motion to recommend payment in lieu of to the council. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller. Motion, Mr. Cloud.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker? Tyler? Austin? Cordell? Cloud? Compton? Couch? Hussein?
Okay, the recommendation passes nine, zero. Next, we got 2309 Spyglass Estates, presented by Norm Ditch Capstone Builders Incorporated. Nobody? We'll table that and I guess this expedient civil engineering, if they ever showed up. So, we also table 23, 20, RP 2301. All right, now we're up to the planning director's report.
The council approved the rezoning requests that were submitted to them at 109 North 48th Street from A1 to O1, 1094 Nichols from A1 to SF2, 4500 South 48th Street from C2 and C5 to MF24, and the East End Members Lane from C5 to MF24. The conditional use for the church at 986 Elmwood Street was approved. They approved the street improvements and MSP waivers for reliable poultry for their parking lot expansion. They approved the, um, street improvement waivers for the Highway 112 for Calvaron Landscaping and for Flying the Coop Hangar Project. They approved payment in lieu of improvements for sidewalk at 613 Black Oak. As you know, they approved the two new members and they approved a reappointment of Shannon for another term. They approved the purchase of stream and wetland mitigation credits from Watershed Conservation Resource Center and Streamworks Mitigation Service in compliance with the Arkansas, the Army Corps of Engineers Permit for the detention pond project that's going out by the airport. They approved an agreement to begin discussions about procuring solid waste contract for this year and file a cleanup lien on, for the removal of overgrown brush and debris at 938 West Sunset. The work session this month will be Tuesday, February the 21st, at the, at the Springdale Fire Department Training Facility on-
Okay, Jackson Training Facility on Turnbo Avenue. We're trying to find a place where we can kind of meet, there'd be a meeting here. The city attorney will be with us to review planning commission procedures, policy, state law, code of ethics, those kind of things. So we have several new members and this is just kind of give everybody a refresher course. Drills?
Run up and down the staircase?
Can't, do they have a pole that you can slide down out there, too? Usually that's only at the fire stations. Some of us can do all that kind of stuff. And, and we want to say welcome to the new guys. Hope we didn't scare you off tonight. This is probably one of the easiest meetings we've had in a while. Five o'clock, yes, at five o'clock. Yeah, you lucked out with a really easy meeting on the first one. Don't plan on that every time, guys, okay? Thank you for the good luck of bringing us a sneezy meeting night.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We're adjourned.